I'd like to call our meeting back to order, please. We're on our agenda item dealing with recognitions and awards. And Laura Lee, would you please make introductions here?
Thank you, and welcome to our special guests and our business partners. We've asked Mr. Jim Smith, Director of Community Development, to come forward for the business partner recognition. We're going to start by recognizing Pepperoni's. Tim and Susan Rydel from Who Are the Owners, please come forward. Pepperoni's is the latest business adventure for Tim and Susan, who own and operate a successful media business. Pepperoni's is a take-and-bake pizza business at 159th and Merlin, across from Chisholm Trail Junior High. Tim serves on the culinary team at his church and has attended the Johnson County Community College Culinary Program, and Susan serves on the Johnson County Fair Foods Committee. They're excited to be a partner with Olathe District Schools and will work with Chisholm Trail and surrounding elementary schools on special events and fundraisers, and district employees will receive a discount when they show their school ID badges. The Rydells are also a connection for our 21st Century Culinary Arts Program, so please welcome Pepperoni's as a school business partner.[85.89][85.89](APPLAUSE). Next, we have a special recognition for one of our teachers, Paula Donham, Olathe East Biology Teacher, and Doug Perrin is coming forward representing Olathe East. Paula has taught in the Olathe School District for 14 years, first at Frontier Trail Junior High before moving to Olathe East in 1998. She came to education from a successful career in business because she wanted to do something that she believed was important and because she wanted to share her passion for learning. She said it felt somewhat like stepping off a precipice, but she's never regretted the leap. She believes that students grow and develop by discovering their talents, stretching their abilities, and achieving their best, and it's her job to create an environment that challenges them but gives them support in and out of class to meet these challenges. During her teaching career, she's contributed to the profession through membership in five professional organizations, as well as holding office with the Kansas Association of Biology Teachers. She has published research as a co-author with Professor Chip Taylor at KU. She's presented workshops and served on program design teams and taken every opportunity to open doors and windows for both students and fellow educators. This year, she's been selected by the National Association of Biology Teachers as the 2006 Outstanding Biology Teacher for Kansas, and she was honored last month at the National Conference in New Mexico. We'd like to offer her our hearty congratulations.[195.12][195.12](APPLAUSE). Do you have any family members here? Okay. Now, we have an announcement about American Education Week celebration by the Olathe NEA, and we have two representatives here, Judy Rapp and Anita Ross. Thank you.
An American Education Week proclamation. Whereas public schools are the backbone of our democracy, providing young people with the tools needed to maintain our nation's precious values of freedom, civility, and equality, and whereas by equipping young Americans with both practical skills and broader intellectual abilities, schools give them hope for and access to a productive future, and whereas education employees, be they social workers, counselors, custodians, teachers, bus drivers, librarians, or substitute educators, work tirelessly to serve our children and communities with care and professionalism.
And whereas schools are community leaders, bringing together adults and children, educators and volunteers, business leaders and educated officials in a common enterprise. Now, therefore, we, Anita and I, serving as American Education Week co-chairs for the Olathe National Education Association, do hereby proclaim November 12th through the 18th as the 85th Annual Observance of American Education Week.[326.02][326.02](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, ladies, for that proclamation. Our next agenda item deals with public comments. We have one person who's signed up to speak to the board with public comments. I'll ask him to come forward at this time, Mr. Peters, and as he's coming, let me provide these comments. At each regular meeting, the board reserves limited time for individuals wishing to address the board. We request that individuals' speakers limit their comments to five minutes. The clerk will monitor the time and notify the speaker when the five-minute time limit has expired. Please direct your comments to the entire board. If a response is appropriate, the president will respond or refer to another individual. In an effort to respect privacy, we ask that speakers refrain from discussing personal complaints involving individual staff members or students. Those speaking are advised that public comments are videotaped recorded for broadcast on the district's educational access channel and audiotape recorded as a matter of public record. Individuals addressing the board should come to the podium at the front of the room, to my right, and state your name and address.
My name is Jim Peters. I live in Bonner Springs, Kansas. I'm a retired school teacher, and I'm an adjunct professor of geography at Kansas City Kansas Community College. I'm currently gathering my data to write a book comparing European educational systems and American educational systems. I've been a substitute teacher at all of the Olathe secondary schools. I've been impressed by the professionalism I have encountered at each school. I feel that two of your schools, Olathe Northwest and Prairie Trail, really stand out as a place for kids to learn and thrive. These two schools, Olathe Northwest and Prairie Trail, are shining stars in the bright galaxy we call the Olathe Public Schools. The staff is exemplary in what a good educational environment can do: teaching, active engagement, kids on task, and encouragement to succeed. Having been a sub in Olathe Northwest and Prairie Trails for the last several years, I have always had, from every instructor in every class, lesson plans that were interesting and valuable. Not one time have I encountered lesson plans at Olathe Northwest or Prairie Trails that were busy work. Incredible and hard-working Olathe Northwest and Prairie Trails staff members like Sue Rippey, Josh Anderson, Annie Winkler, Nancy Martin Sotaren, and Susan Butler are but a few of the truly outstanding instructors the lucky kids of Olathe Public Schools have. Mrs. Donham, I guess we include you. Did she leave? Oh, well, I would include her from when I heard about that.[496.22][496.22](LAUGHTER). The Olathe Northwest office people, Sue Nolan, Jennifer Sanders, and Sharon Kite, excuse me, Hake, take great care of subs in those schools. We are treated with respect, and every effort is made to ensure we have complete lesson plans, building layout for emergencies, office help if needed, and made to feel comfortable in our temporary assignments. Dr. Pos and Mrs. Jorkovich have the best-run schools I have seen in my 36 years of education. A quote from Winston Churchill, "Personally, I'm always ready to learn, although I do not always like being taught." He needed to go to Olathe Northwest. He would have changed that quote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peters.[537.16][537.16](APPLAUSE). Do we have anyone else who wishes to address the board in public comments? Seeing none, we'll move on with the rest of our business. Board members, I want to divert from our order of business for just a moment if I could. If you refer to future action items, it's item number 8.05, dealing with preliminary audit report for the period ended June 30, 2006. Mr. Tom Singleton is here this evening, partner with the, representing the accounting firm, the audit firm, and we're going to try to give him a little preference tonight in terms of his schedule by dealing with any questions or comments we might have on this agenda item, and if there are none, then we'll turn him loose to return back home.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your consideration regarding the schedule. Each year, the district is required by Kansas statutes and federal law to have a financial audit. Our firm was privileged to perform that audit for the year ended June 30, 2006. Each one of you should have received a copy of the draft of the financial statements, and I want to just make a few brief comments and then be happy to answer any questions. In terms of the audit, there are really three objectives to the audit process, the first being to issue an opinion on the financial statements. That opinion you'll find on page one of the financial statements. The auditor's report indicates that the financial statements do present fairly the financial position and the operating results of your school district for the year ended June 30, 2006. As auditors, we can issue a number of different opinions on financial statements. This is the highest opinion we issue and reflects in a very positive way on the financial management of the district. In addition to the auditor's report on the financial statements, we also issued two separate reports, one on federal programs and the other on compliance with government auditing standards. In each one of those reports, we're required to address issues concerning internal controls and compliance. Neither one of those auditor's reports reported any major deficiencies or major noncompliance, so good outcomes there as well. We provided the district some additional deliverables, which should be contained in your packet, and I invite you, after you've had the opportunity to review those, to either direct questions directly to me or through staff to me. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Singleton. Board members, any questions or comments?
Is this a, does this have an impact on the district's budget, or is it simply a categorization of the liabilities that the district will have under the rule?
The financial statements that are prepared annually to comply with state statutes and also with the federal requirements are prepared on the accrual basis of accounting, reflecting the actual financial results for the year ended June 30. Contained in that document are certain schedules that are on the budgetary basis that compare your actual operations on the budgetary basis to the annual budget. So, the budget is a component of the annual financial statements, but the annual financial statements contain a lot of other information as well.
I notice that one of your recommendations is, or one option that has been listed, is to solicit an actuary group to give us an understanding of what our liabilities would be. Is that something that you believe is a good recommendation?
Let me clarify the context of that. By using accrual basis accounting as you do, there is a requirement from the GASBY, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, that requires, within the next few years, all entities that use full accrual accounting or governmental entities to determine and record a liability for what is called other post-employment benefits. Specifically, in the state of Kansas, you're required by statute to make your health insurance plan available to individuals who retire, but before they're eligible for Medicare. And so, this particular requirement, and our recommendation, is that the district begin the process of exploring what it would entail to have the services of an actuary perform that duty, or alternatively, and in the state of Kansas, you do have the option of waiving out of GAAP, as many of the large, many of the school districts all across the state have done, large and small, that once you waive out of generally accepted accounting principles, this requirement for other post-employment benefit liability accounting would simply not apply, and would then make this recommendation not applicable to the district.
And is it 2008 that if we didn't receive a waiver, we'd be obligated to comply with this, or would it be 2007?
I believe it's 2008. I'd have, I'd have to research that. The, it's a staggered implementation period, and I'm not sure which one you're, whether you're a second tier or a first tier, so I'd have to check on that and get back.
And do you believe that there is a risk that if not handled properly, this could be negatively impacting on our credit rating?
Well, one of the things that you need to understand about the GAAP waiver and the issue of accounting for other post-employment benefits is, first, with the GAAP waiver, many districts in the state of Kansas have opted for the GAAP waiver, which simply means that the recording and disclosure of that liability is not required under that basis of accounting. Many of these districts have gone to the bond market and have been very successful in issuing bonds and have, have had ratings that have been acceptable to them in the circumstances. The alternative would be to continue with your current method of financial reporting in your external financial statements and use the full accrual method. That then would basically require you, in order to be in compliance with that method, to have the actuarial study done and have the liability presented, as well as the other requirements under that particular standard for disclosure. Should you choose not to implement GASBY Statement 45, that would, I think, be rather unusual, because under the full accrual method of accounting and GAAP, most entities who want to continue on that method have elected to go ahead and have the actuarial studies.
And what you're saying is that the Olathe School District is one of the few that does adhere to the GASBY principles, and therefore, that would be a departure from that?
That's a correct statement.
Thank you.
If we were to depart from that, how does that, how would that change, given everything else remaining equal your audit opinion?
The opinion would be on a different set of financial statements. When an entity in the state of Kansas waives out of GAAP, there is only one other option for presenting your external financial statements, and that's what's called a basis of cash receipts and cash disbursements modified by encumbrances and accounts payable. Basically, what that means is that the financial statements would then only present cash and unencumbered cash, as opposed to the full range of assets and liabilities that your financial statements currently present. It's a more specialized basis of accounting, which complies with state statutes and is a very conservative basis of accounting, because it reports a few of the assets, but in the notes and the body of the financial statements reports all, basically all of the liabilities, with a few notable exceptions, like other post-employment benefits.
Which in that, in that method could potentially, on the district's balance sheet per se, show us as being undervalued as to what we truly are. Is that correct?
Well, it's comparing apples and oranges, because with the GAAP waiver, you're using an entirely different basis of accounting, as opposed to full accrual. These financial statements are presented on the full accrual, in complete compliance with generally accepted accounting principles. So, it's really, the comparison is different between the two methods.
How often would we have to have the actuary study completed?
I believe the minimum requirement are GASBY 45s every two years, and you would have an initial actuarial valuation, and then the next required valuation would be within two years.
Then I understand from, from reading the report, that staff is in the process of looking at that actuary study and finding out how much that would cost to do that, and then also, on an ongoing basis, what we could expect to be the cost of that in future years. Is that correct?
Yes.
So, what's our timeline on this to make a decision? What would we be expecting here is when we would have to, have to have a decision made on this?
Yeah. I think what I'm going to need to do is get back to you as far as the implementation. It's certainly not this year, which would be the fiscal year ended June 30, 2007. We'd probably be looking, and I have to again check my, my information, but I think we'd be looking at it the year, fiscal year ended June 30, 2008.
A comment for staff. One of the things I think that we need to look at, and Mr. Singleton, you can comment on this if you'd like, is if we continue with full accrual, but elect not to adopt this particular principle, that would result in a modified opinion.
It most likely would, yes.
But it would be modified only with respect to disclosing that we have elected not to adopt this principle, this accrual and this disclosure.
That would most likely be the case, yes.
So, what I need to know then is, what does that mean to underwriters and bond counsel and so forth, in terms of, if that's the only reason for the modification, what effect does that have? Because I know my personal bias in all this is to remain full accrual, because I think that's the best and most accountable way, but if this ends up being a relatively minor thing, or we determine we just don't want to deal with the costs of having the valuation done every year or two, can we have, are we, are we willing to accept a modified opinion if this is the only thing it's modified for?
You know, I can tell you from, from my professional experience, at least up to this point, that entities who are full GAAP, use generally accepted accounting principles for the most part, have elected to go ahead and implement 45. The cost, the relative cost will, of course, vary depending upon how much you have the actuaries do, but I think, you know, staff can report back to you in terms of what they get on prices. I don't think, based on what I've seen out there in the market, I don't think it's out of line in terms of the professional fees that you pay and what you get from the actuaries.
Mr. Gilmore, I'd have a tendency to agree with you, because just from a public standpoint, the reality seems to be that every year, the school district gets a modified letter rather than a fully qualified letter, so, and all of a sudden, we lose the interpretation of that from the public standpoint.
Well, I think, let me clarify, in terms of the auditor's report on the financial statements, it's an unqualified auditor's report. We, as auditors, typically will issue some, some management recommendation letters, and typically, on virtually all of our clients, every year, we'll find some minor item that will be reported to you, either a statutory violation or some minor noncompliance with a federal program. But typically, at least in my experience with your district, we've always issued unqualified auditor's reports on the financial statements.
Even if we elect it out, then?
Well, let me back up then. If you would choose to not implement GASBY Statement 45, clearly, that would have some implications for what our opinion would...
That was my point.
Okay. Yeah, sorry, misunderstood.
And I too agree with Mr. Gilmore. I guess I would like to see what the benefit would be of seeking a waiver on this, if any. I believe that we should retain the full GASBY compliance, unless there's some benefit I'm not aware of, and my main concern is just the credit worthiness that is looked upon the district with.
Yeah, I guess in, if you're seeking a comment from me on that, the only thing I would say is, in my professional experience, for entities that are full GAAP, as yours is, they implement 45. There's no middle ground on it. I think, once you get out in the market and look at the pricing on the actuaries, I don't think your, I don't think sticker shock will hit you on it.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Mr. Deener?
I just wanted to say that I appreciate Mr. Singleton's comments, that perhaps legally, we don't have to have this accomplished until 2008, but it was our staff's desire to work with the board and come to a conclusion on which direction we're going to go during this fiscal year, so between now and next spring, we were hoping to bring you the information you need so we can decide which direction we want to go.
Could I add one more thing on that? Just, the issue of the recording of a liability is one part of the issue. When we talk about other post-employment benefits, we are talking about a liability that will be reported in the financial statements that's never been reported before, and as Mr. Deener's aware, there really, there's another side to this issue, which is the reporting of the liability, but then, once you have a liability, what's your decision in terms of funding it? And so, your actuaries are, I'm not here to promote actuary services, but one of the things they will do for you, if you choose to select that as a service, is they will work with you on the whole funding aspect of this, once you figure out how big the liability is, and that's another, another side of this, although I will say that GASBY does not require the funding of the liability. They only require the determination and the disclosure of the liability.
That was a question I meant to ask you earlier. Is this a, just simply a disclosure item, or is it an actual in-the-accrual run-through our profit and loss, whatever we call our profit and loss statement?
Well, the first year that you record the liability, as I understand it, and again, we're just, this is really just beginning with the clients that we work with. My understanding is that you would record, you would record the liability, and most of the charge would go to equity, because it's not a current expense. And then you have the ability over, I believe, the GASBY 45 allows you to amortize the past service costs over a maximum of 30 years. So, actuarially, what they'll do is they'll pull that amortization in, and every year you record your, your annual required contribution, part of that component of that would be that amortization of the prior liability for those individuals who, who should, you should have been recording in prior years, if the standard had been in effect, that spread out over 30 years as a maximum.
Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you.
We'll move back on to our regular agenda items. We're on action items, consent agenda, section five. We'll entertain a motion for adoption of all of our consent agenda items, unless there's an item you'd like to have discussed separately. Mr. Churchman?
Mr. Gilmore, I'd like to discuss 5.05, policies revisions.
Okay, five policies and revisions. Any other items on the consent agenda? If not, go ahead, Mr. Churchman, on your question or comment on that item.
Mr. Gilmore, some clarification, the additional change that's been suggested, I see that's already included, so we don't necessarily need to have discussion about that, is that correct?
Is it already out there on our, the change is on our system? Okay, yes, we do not need to discuss it if it's already out there.
The only thing, I'm not sure all board members have seen that line that's in green. It was just posted prior to the meeting, so there is a suggestion there that probably you need to draw everybody's attention to and explain why.
The suggestion is...
Mr. Churchman, why don't you go ahead with that explanation, since you requested it?
There's a statement in the policy that's, that currently states, "At the Board of Education Annual Organizational Meeting in July, the Board of Education will approve the list of financial institutions," and I'd like to see, the insertion is that we add a clarifier that says, "Or at any time determined by the Board," which gives us just the additional clarification that at any point in time, we can add eligible bidders bidding on idle funds.
Any other questions or comments on that slight modification? Hearing none, we'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Mr. President, I approve that we would approve the consent agenda as listed with the modification to the policies revision. Thank you, Mr. Parker. Is there a second?
One second.
Thank you, Mr. Churchman. Any further discussion? Mrs. Carpenter?
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Dr. Drummond?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes. And that item is passed. On to bids, contracts, and agreements, section six. Are there any items for discussion or questions?
Mr. Gilmore, I'd like to talk briefly about 6.07, digital classroom equipment.
Okay, 6.07. Any other items? Okay, Mr. Churchman, please proceed.
Miss Lane, just some questions about this. With the proposed 20 additional rooms for digital classroom boards, how many rooms, then, would have been completed?
We currently have 890 completed, so this will add another 200 to that number.
And then, out of our technology plan, how many rooms would be remaining?
Little over 1,000. About 1,007.
And I know that we, last year, approved a technology plan. What portion of our technology plan would this represent percent completion of, then, as far as the total number of rooms completed?
This represents about, well, let me get my figures here, so I'm not misstating anything. The technology plan identified a little over $5 million was needed to complete all the digital classrooms throughout the district at the time the board approved that, in August of 2005. We have since done the 155 rooms that we did this past summer, and that did include Harmony, so that was new construction. There was about 15 or 16 rooms, I believe, at Harmony. So, this bid that we're asking you to approve tonight is for an additional 200 classrooms, and those are all existing classrooms. None of those are new construction. So, those, that brings the total up that we have done since the board approved the technology plan to a little over $1 million, $1,110,000, and that's a little over 20% of what we had initially estimated in the technology plan that it would take to do the digital classrooms throughout the district.
And the interactive device, just for my own notification, is that the wireless, I call it the wireless writing pad that the teacher uses to walk around the classroom?
Yes, it is. We are currently standardized on Smart Technologies airliner, and that is not in the bid that you saw tonight. It will come to you probably in December. We bid those separate. It's usually two different vendors that provide those, so we'll be bringing... those to you in a separate bid, but yes, that is what the interactive device is, it's a wireless pad to interact with the whiteboard or the screen, whichever is in the classroom for display.
Good, I think the digital classroom, the boards are just an outstanding aspect of the whole educational process, and it's easy to lose sight of the tremendous progress that you and your staff have made when we just look at twenty components here and there, but you've made tremendous progress. I know that we have a ways to go.
We do have a ways to go, but after this, you know, we're close to getting halfway there. We will be coming back to the board probably in late winter, early spring, to bid Madison Place and Prairie Learning Center, as well as we hope to bid another between one hundred and two hundred classrooms that will take us through installation through the summer. We currently have our own staff installing, Ron Wagner is here, he leads that team. We're saving about four hundred dollars per classroom by installing ourselves, plus we're able to do it much faster than we were when we relied on the vendor, so we're moving very rapidly along, and we're thrilled to be able to provide this for the teachers. We just, every time they walk in the door, they're just jumping for joy because they're thrilled to be able to have this technology in their classroom, so thank the board for being able to allow us to do that.
I think it's noteworthy, I want to say, because I know the installation process, you're not wasting any daylight on that, it's keeping you busy constantly, and this is just great progress by you and your staff, so I think it's important to note the details behind it.
I will be sure and share that with them.
I have a question on item six point oh six, which deals with the teacher workstation systems. Mr. Hastert, are you going to help me with this? As I was just looking, this is another example where we end up with basically one bid response, which is always a concern for us board members. I didn't look up both lines of products, but I looked up the Burrow, I did a quick search on the internet, and I could find it in New Zealand, but I couldn't find it in the United States, and have we limited ourselves to a line that's very difficult to find, or...
Well, we chose Burrow fall of last year. Lacoste has typically been our standard, and we were able to identify Burrow as an acceptable alternate back in the fall of last year. It's been a very good product for us. It is not exclusive to out-of-country, it is difficult to find on the internet, and those vendors that will take the time can find it and price it. Lacoste and Burrow are, I'll say, essentially identical in their quality and their functionality that we use here at the district. As you may remember, we bid this as a Burrow specified product last month, only had one vendor respond, and so we opened up to also including Lacoste this time, and again, had just one vendor respond. So the vendors are just saying that they're not competitive in competing with United Office, who is providing both of those products for us.
Do you think those other bidders are aware that United is providing this, and they can't beat, they know they can't beat that bid?
I think they're pretty confident that, yes, they are providing very competitive bidding for us.
All right, thank you. Members, if there are no other questions or comments, we'll entertain a motion to approve this set of agenda items.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Drummond and Ms. Ashley. Any further questions or comments on the motion? Mrs. Carpenter?
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Dr. Drummond?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
And the motion carries. Agenda item seven, other action items. First item is setting a special meeting dates, times, and places. First one being due to the winter break schedule. We need to consider moving our January regular meeting date a week back to the eleventh at five thirty PM here at the education center. Any discussion or comment on that item?
I will not be available that evening, but we must move forward.
I'm not going to be here either.
On the eleventh?
On the eleventh.
Did the original date still work for everyone here tonight?
It does for me.
Yes, uh-huh.
Doctor All indicated that they could make that work, they were just looking for a little breathing room over the break and the reduction in staff availability.
All right, I think that's the holiday weekend, the eleventh, Monday's a holiday.
Jim?
Yes.
Martin Luther King?
Martin Luther King is Monday, so, the following Monday.
The fifteenth.
So it looks like we'll be leaving that date alone, right? Leave it on the fourth.
One thing that I might mention, because we're not fully staffed, if we, we will get as much of that board report to you, you know, before that weekend, there may be some coming in, you know, few items coming in Monday and Tuesday, but we'll do our very best to have a complete report. I may be doing part of it by long distance, but we'll be having a complete report.
We do have another series of dates to consider for special meetings in December and January. You can see those in your agenda, board members. Are there any preferences there? I know that I'm not available, if you look, let's focus on the December date first. I know that I'm not available on the twelfth or the thirteenth.
We had originally talked about the fourteenth.
We're just confirming that that still works. Okay, we'll leave the fourteenth on the calendar, but let's look at the January date, that third Thursday is the eighteenth, but another option would be the twenty-fifth if that would work better.
No, no, it won't. The date's on the eighteenth.
But the eighteenth still works?
Yeah.
Okay, I think we've pretty much tried to plan our schedules around this, so we'll leave it at that. Do we need to adopt those tonight?
Yes.
We do need to adopt?
At least the December ones.
Okay. We'll need to take action on the December fourteenth date, that is a special meeting, so we'll need a motion to do that.
Set at five thirty or six, Mr. President?
Well, we have typically done the special meetings at six o'clock. I know Mr. Churchman has requested, we tried that time, will that work for you, Jim?
The six PM would be my preference, but certainly remain flexible if other times are needed.
I think six works fine.
How would my motion to that affect?
Six o'clock?
The fourteenth?
Fourteenth, I'm sorry.
Is there a second? Mr. Churchman, thank you for the second. Any further discussion? Mrs. Carpenter?
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Dr. Drummond?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
And the motion carries. Section eight of our agenda is future action items.
Excuse me, Mr. President, was that also for the January meeting?
No, I'm sorry, that was only the December meeting.
Oh, we're going to take action, we're going to take action on the January meeting?
We can.
I'd make a motion that we had have a special, schedule a special board meeting for Thursday, January eighteenth, two thousand and seven, at six PM.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Drummond. Any further discussion on the motion? Mrs. Carpenter?
Dr. Drummond?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
And that motion carries, so we've scheduled December and January, thank you. Back to future action items. Items on the future actions item report are location of junior high number nine, school calendar, equipment for taping of board meetings, we've already discussed our preliminary audit report, construction management services contracts, student trips, student survey, and KASB legislative positions.
I have a question on the location of junior high number nine. In the report, it indicated that, if it's, if I'm pronouncing it right, the bleakly site would not have the sewers, et cetera, dependent on the development of that area. So do we have any feel for how that development will take place, or do we have any, your thoughts, Chris?
For the streets, one hundred and twenty-seventh street, there's been a benefit district already approved through the city for that. It's been approved, it's waiting for one of the two parties. The two parties are us and Rod Rock Development to the north to state a need for that road to begin the design and construction of that road. Water would be part of that benefit district with the road sewer would be, would have to come from another benefit district that we would have to work with the city to organize.
Do you see that as a negative or keeping us from pursuing that site?
It wouldn't stop us from using that site, no.
Thank you.
Just a comment as we look at this proposal here, I know there's a lot of moving parts, and just want to reaffirm my thoughts to the board that we should be taking a look at woodland to make that school, and I know this is going to sound worse than I mean it, make it as big as possible, but still, without infringing upon our goals of what we want our elementary school sizes to be, and I would welcome any thoughts from staff on that.
I just might make a...
Surely no expectation here for that, that's just kind of, as they may come to you down the road.
I just might make an observation and kind of a question in this whole process. Several years ago, as some may recall, we moved the size of our elementary schools up somewhat. I believe we were, a few years ago, at five hundred, four fifty, in that range. The board asked for a study to increase that size because we were having so many additions on to it. Dr. Banikowski, can you discern at all whether that impacted academic achievement as we moved up from the scale we had many years ago, a few years ago at least, from four hundred and fifty, five hundred to around six hundred now?
Certainly size is not the only variable that would impact student learning, the demographics of that population, many other factors. Certainly the schools that are currently larger than that are achieving well as measured, for example, by the Kansas Assessment Measures. There's certainly many factors to take into consideration when you're talking about elementary school size, and we tried to provide you that two-page research summary with Mr. Martin and others helping with that particular item, and I think it gives you some of the research information on that, and certainly many things that have to be considered as you determine what size you would like a particular elementary school to be. Certainly the demographics of that school, the proximity of that school, the neighborhood concept of that school, all have to be considered, as well as once a determination is made of the size that you would like that school to be, then looking at staffing and building, since that would not be a temporary situation, it would be what we're building that school for there are other considerations to take into factoring that school. So I would say that it's a complex answer, it's not an easy answer, it depends on, the student demographics to me would be the number one thing we want to consider and the impact it might have on student achievement.
Thank you.
And just to be clear, I don't want to suggest that we supersede any of those guiding principles that are very important. I think at the end of the day, my comfort level will come from looking at staff and saying, making sure that academic excellence and all these other attributes remain whole, what do we feel the largest sizes we can go to without infringing upon those, because there's just a lot of different needs in that area that we need to maximize, so that's the point I'm trying to make.
I know, maybe Greg can add to this, but I think I recall from our last meeting that Madison Place that we're building in southeast Alatha, that opened in two thousand and seven, will be the largest square footage of our elementary school, so it is somewhat of a step up, particularly on the infrastructure, and you may want to clarify that a little bit and maybe respond to Mr. Churchman.
I will try to. I certainly would have to bow to the opinion of the TNL staff. To me, this really isn't a design and construction question. We could build a school significantly larger than Madison Place, we could build a school approaching the capacity of a junior high school on that site if that were, if that were the requirement. I think we could easily take the Madison Place prototype, it was designed to have ten additional classrooms, that would provide an additional two hundred student capacity. We could deal with the media center, we could deal with the lunchroom, we could build a larger school. I guess I'm not really trying to dodge this, you know, trying to say, I'm really not sure it's a design and construction question, I think it's really more an academic question, not what we can do. To help with that, though, we did look at a feasibility study, we could design an eighty thousand square foot building with roughly a nine hundred student capacity, I'm just not sure that's a good idea, plus the traffic it generates, plus the fact that that much addition to that school adds another almost two million dollars to the construction cost of a building that we really hadn't planned on being sixty-six thousand square feet, sure hadn't planned on it being eighty thousand square feet. So from a design and construction point of view, that would be sort of our opinion, but I think it's really a TNL, an academic question of how large we want the school, not how large can we build it. We could build a large school if we needed to, I'm just not sure it's a good idea.
Yeah, and I share that view completely. Thank you.
I guess part of my perception is, having made this increase several years ago to where we are now, I haven't seen any discernible liabilities in terms of academic progress, but I wonder if there's a critical mass at some point in which there would be an issue in terms of size. I understand the demographics and the makeup of the school and those different things, yet I know there's not a definitive answer, I'm just wondering if there is a point that if we build it too big, then it'll be self-defeating for us, rather than to build it with the potential getting bigger if we need to. So it's a, it's a difficult question to ask, a difficult question to answer for sure in terms of the exact size. Again, on the one hand, it hasn't harmed us to this point, but going up another one hundred, one hundred and fifty, I don't know, and the research doesn't seem to be definitive on that. I guess it's more of a common sense question with some other factors involved, such as traffic and special services, and how many kids can you adequately manage in one school at one time, at third graders, fourth graders, fifth graders, kindergartners? I wish there was some definitive answer.
And as the research report indicated, probably the only definitive number that seemed to have been mentioned more frequently in the research, which again, we will be honest with you, is limited, was three to four hundred students for an elementary school. Again, many of the articles talked about large schools and small schools without ever defining what large school and small school would look like. I think one of the things that is critical is if we determine to go above six hundred, and we're going to say a seven hundred and eight hundred school, we have to recognize that usually means it's taking into consideration a larger boundary area. What is our definition of neighborhood concept, what will our community be interested in related to that as well? And I also think we have to look at the factors impacting that facility, staffing, the infrastructure that we talk about, and looking, making sure that we are meeting an individual personalized educational need for those elementary children. So I do think there are conversations that probably need to occur, what is the impact on teaching and learning, but also what impact needs to happen on facilities if we're going to look at a larger school.
Another thing I thought of was, what would that neighborhood look like in twenty years? Would it be able to sustain a larger school as a neighborhood, newer neighborhoods got older? Would there be fewer students coming from that neighborhood at a fairly sizable school, and we would be underserved in terms of having enough kids in that school and then have to increase the boundaries even further to capture enough kids to fill that school? Again, these are more questions and opinions or thoughts, just wonderings.
Wouldn't that also enter into our overall strategy as far as the location of the schools? Because Bob's point is well taken, as the population ages and the school has less population, we expand the boundaries, and then pretty soon we have overlapping boundaries, so it would appear to me that this would be a strategic decision on our part and not something that we would just decide on the spur of the moment, because it goes to our land acquisition and our future land acquisitions as well.
Dr. Drummond, sort of along with what Dr. Banikowski had mentioned, when we visit with parents during the design of a new school, one of the biggest concerns they have is traffic, and where we have our most traffic concerns are our largest schools, Sunnyside, Arbor Creek, you really don't get that many traffic complaints from a smaller school. One of the things we found, and it was really, you know, sometimes you just ask questions and occasionally you get an answer that really turns the light bulb on over your head, visiting with the parents at Arbor Creek, there are students that live within sight of Arbor Creek that don't walk to school. students that live within sight of Arbor Creek that don't walk to school because there's so much traffic at Arbor Creek, it's not safe to. So you really sort of reach this catch-22 where you, where you have so much traffic that no one walks, and therefore you just generate more traffic. A 900-student elementary school, in my mind, and I'm not the final decision here, that sure isn't a neighborhood school anymore. That's more a, you know, a regional school. It's not to say that we couldn't do it, but traffic is, when you talk with parents, it's one of the things they mention, and they say it's always, to me, as I go out and sort of look at schools and try to figure out their concern, it's the larger enrollment schools that have the traffic issues, not a smaller enrollment school. So not only within the facility, but also the traffic in the area, the streets, you know, streets designed to handle that kind of traffic, what kind, you know, is, would really be a concern for me getting, getting too large.
And then in regards to the school location, with Alatha, Alatha's neighborhoods are really, in our established areas, very stable. As one student moves out, other students move in. So, I mean, right now, we really aren't looking at any schools that need to expand their dis, their school enrollment areas to get more students in. And as we talked about at the last special meeting, we came up with the need of a lot of 130 or 150 more spaces that schools need. And so really, even right now, we're looking that our schools, if anything, need to construct, get their districts, their attendants areas smaller, just because, or get more space at their schools. So even in our established areas, the issue of school location, right now, I'd say we've done a very good job of doing that and aren't. And, and the issue of our location has been good.
Possibly one other piece, too, that, in, in consideration of our staff, you know, we are supporting so much professional learning communities and the building, the ability for our staff to work together in doing quality planning differentiation for our students. I think if we get too large, and certainly at the elementary level, that support, that kind of planning, that differentiation in meeting the individual needs of students may get lost in, in the largeness of a school.
Any other questions or comments? Dr. Drummond?
We're just waiting for an answer from our president. What should we do?
Any other items we want to talk about? Is that for an answer?
Great.
I did want to point out to you that the last item in this section, KASB legislative positions, they're not so much legislative positions as they are amendments to some policies and statements that KASB has. Mr. Parker is going to go down there and vote as our delegate, and I thought it would be wise for us next special meeting to give him a little direction. Either we consent to what they're proposing, or if we have differences with what they're proposing, we can at least discuss that to give he and Mrs. Wilhelm, who's the alternate, at least some guidance on where our board is, since they are representing specifically our board as delegates to there. So that's why that information is in there. We'll deal with it on the 16th.
Mr. Gilmore, one other item on the student survey. As I've been reading that, I'm encouraged by the Communities That Care Survey, and would welcome any feedback from the staff here in the future on any issues with going to the long survey versus the short survey.
Anything else we need to discuss or point out?
Just, I'd like to do something. I'd like to, I'll visit with Dr. All just a minute, moment. I noticed that you had requested before our next special board meeting on the 16th that board members might take an opportunity to come in in, in pairs to meet with you and staff on, because trying to get our arms around all of the issues as regards to the, to the, to the bond issue, we need to probably take some more time to study that. So I just wanted to, to indicate that I'd be willing to do that, and if another board member would want to go along with me when, whenever that was, maybe we could pair up, and would certainly be an opportunity for us to get more information. Not that we wouldn't be getting that same information at the next special, special meeting, but also just, just the time to study some, some, some of the ramifications that are surrounding the, the bond proposal and all the things that we're talking about. So I appreciate the opportunity, and, and if you just, I'd be glad to meet as scheduled as available for you to do that.
Deb Madden is available. We can start tomorrow if, if you have any interest in having us work on a common time. In some cases, it may need to be individual just because of people's schedules, and that would be fine. And if, if a couple of you could double up, then that helps a little bit, too. But if you have interest in that, and you have to look at your own schedule, November 16th is coming up very quickly. But I think this is important enough, particularly on the topics on November 16th, which does have to do with the grade level reconfiguration. That might want to be your priority topic. Then I, I got the sense at the last meeting with the additional information about existing facilities and needs there, and some of the proposals maybe that Mr. Thomason might have of what certain things might look like, that at least maybe before the December, whatever that meeting date was, the 14th, that that would be an opportunity to really look at that existing facilities piece or growth, whichever you want to look at. We just want to be able to give you the time to really dig in deep to some of these topics and have, and I'll have the appropriate staff that have that expertise for you. We can have that discussion in addition to our special meetings. So just let me know, and we'll work with you on your schedule.
Okay, thank you, Dr. All.
Could I ask how much time you would estimate that we should set aside for that?
My sense is that I think less than 90 minutes would be hard to do, to really have an opportunity. And you might not be able to focus on everything, but if you said, here's a chunk of this that I really want to focus on, then we'll put together, or there's two things I really want addressed, and you tell me what you feel like you need. That may vary from board member to board member, based on, you know, maybe what aspects of the bond task force meetings you might have attended or other areas of interest. And then we'll just design the staff around who, who might need to be there that would be most helpful at the detail level.
I thought she started to say less than 90 minutes. I was going to tell her I didn't believe her. Ninety minutes. Okay, and that, our, section nine of our agenda is on written information, written reports, one dealing with budget status and revenue projections. Mr. Deener has given you some leisure reading, given all of us some leisure reading on the budget here at our places. Also some good information on revenue projections. Are there any questions or comments related to that material? Okay, also the Mill Creek Center enrollment statistics are there. If there's no questions or comments on that, we're ready to entertain moving into executive session. Dr. All, how much time do we think we need?
I'm thinking 45 minutes.
We'll look for a motion to return at 8:30. If someone would like to make that motion, please.
Mr. President, I would move to recess to executive session to consult with attorney on matters deemed privileged in an attorney-client relationship to protect attorney-client privilege, the public interest, to return to regular session at 8:30 PM.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Drummond and Mr. Churchman. Any discussion on the motion? Mrs. Carpenter.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Dr. Drummond?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes.
And the motion carries. We'll be adjourned to executive session.